All right, Ron.
I think you're, I think you're exaggerating.
Really good.
How the progress?
So you're using the same covers your.
Oh, yeah.
You painted them?
Yeah, that's the privately standard everything.
Yes.
And private. And we're painting it.
We showed at the upper half.
Kitchen cabinets? Yeah, my mic's been all done when we had birth cabinets or painted yellow. Well, we've been all winter ourselves.
We had the floor. All the floors all.
Yeah, the heat pump for something keeping cool.
I have air conditioning in the window. That is, this is nice.
This is my first year with a heat pump. I didn't care so much about the heat.
Yeah. Don't care for them. They don't cost very much really, the rebate from the, from the state to the federal government.
Right.
New ones, you see the new ones.
All of me, Lord, God, we rise for political allegiance. Of the United States of America. The intended program topic, which is hands, one nation, I do God, indivisible, with everything and just for all. Hey. Are there any kind of adjustments to the agenda? See. Public comment. We all know about public comments, we allow three minutes. Please be nice. Does anybody have public comment tonight? Yes.
Sort of standard for introducing. I've never been here before. Um, so I'm Kelly Gardner, I'm a community member, I have three children. My.
Occupy me, please. I guess.
Um, I'm a mother of three children in the community, my oldest is a birth grader who's going in birth grade. My middle one is going to be starting pre K in the fall and my youngest will be starting pre K in the fall, point on four. Um, so I just. I don't, I'm sure you guys are aware there was an email that went out about pre K this year. Um, it got me thinking about concerns for on building years to come, and so I wanted to at least bring it to the board. Um, so I attended pre K screening on the ninth for my son Evan. Um, we were told as parents that pre K programs can be a half day program this year. And the reasons presented to us on that day were that the class last year was quite large. Um, and that they wanted to eliminate rest time. Um, since that time, there's been open email communications superintendent lane. And it appears that the plan moving forward as of now is to do a modified full day pre K this fall. Meaning that kids will be dismissed at call forty five, therefore eliminating this time. Um, I appreciate the time, the consideration that has gone into the pre K program thus far, including Leah over there. And I do feel that there are some needs where we are going to special and and that it's going to be coming up from year to year, probably about this half day versus full day. Um, and so I feel pretty strongly about this, I have a background as a speech pathologist and I'm also a practicing P A. So I understand broadly development and how the intervention is. Um, and I hate that in the next two years, this will probably come up again by other child. So, um, these are my concerns or considerations. Research shows that full day pre K programs provide long term benefit for children in comparison to their peers and half day programs. Um, the research studies specifically show that in looking long term into my first grade, that they're still uh doing better. Um, in terms of their schooling and testing in compared to their happy pre K counterparts that they were compared to. Our town, from my understanding, has had a fully pre K that has benefited our children both academically and socially. Um, and by going down or considering going down to half day, no matter what year that happens. Um, that we are making kind of a backward move. Um, I've been in contact with the Department of Education, the main Department of Education. They do support a full day program and they provide research backing this for anybody trying to go to a full day. Um, I would hate to see our community go to a half day considering the benefits that it's had. Um, the rest time issue for me is, uh, you know, I can give or take it, I guess. But I think it's really important considering that we are in preparation for kindergarten. And we are asking our kids starting in kindergarten to sit quietly and attentively and, you know, be able to pay attention and not move. Starting in kindergarten all the way through, and so if we eliminate rest time, then we're eliminating something that is actually quite important for them to be able to make it through school moving forward. Um, and then lastly, you know, daycare is an issue and it's been brought up. I don't have that issue, I understand other people do, but I will say this, we are asking, you know, we're wanting our town to get younger people to move in. And I moved here, I didn't grow up here, I moved here, my husband and I considered the fact that your school system had a fully pre K when we moved here. Um, and I know other people have as well, and so, um, I think that's something really important to consider. So.
Anyone else? What would tell me? Seeing none. Have a motion for approval of the minute, please. Kevin?
I moved for three minutes at the school board meeting June sixth and June twenty second, twenty twenty three, barring any errors or omissions.
Second. Have a motion in the second, any discussion? All available. By one. Yeah, the whole payroll warrant, please.
I can make a motion to direct pretend in schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in the school payroll warrant, P R twenty three dash twenty six. In the amount of one hundred and twenty eight thousand, three hundred and ninety seven dollars and twenty nine cents. P R twenty three dash twenty six D and the amount of thirty eight thousand, fifty nine dollars, fifty three cents. May was twenty three dash twenty nine and the amount of thirty six thousand, four hundred and forty one dollars, sixty eight cents. And main purse twenty three dash thirty in the amount of eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty seven dollars and nine cents on June twenty second, twenty twenty three. And payroll, uh, P R twenty four dash one in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and ninety eight dollars and fifty four cents. P R twenty four dash one dash two in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars, thirty nine cents. And P R twenty four dash I D. In the amount of sixty two thousand, two hundred and eighty nine dollars and seventeen cents on July sixth to twenty twenty three. And P R twenty four dash two in the amount of one hundred and six thousand, six hundred and ninety three dollars, five cents. P R twenty four dash two D in the amount of sixty two thousand, four hundred and ninety five dollars and twenty six cents. Main purse twenty three dash thirty one, amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety one dollars and eighty cents. And main purse twenty three thirty two in the amount of thirty two thousand, one hundred and eighty seven dollars, two cents on July twentieth, twenty twenty three.
Second.
Any question? Seeing none, all available. All along. Motion for payable one.
No, damn it. It was moved to direct the supernamen schools to authorize payment by the town treasurer to each party listed herein. The sum set against each name contained in school payable warrant number S A twenty three dash twenty nine in the amount of seven thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars and nineteen cents. S A twenty three dash thirty in the amount of a thousand dollars student accounts. A P twenty three, twenty three dash forty four in the amount of thirty two thousand, eight hundred and twenty nine dollars and eighty nine cents. And A P twenty three dash forty five in the amount of two hundred and forty two thousand, nine hundred and ninety two dollars and ninety cents. F Y twenty three on June twenty second, twenty twenty three. S eight twenty three dash thirty one in the amount of twelve dollars and thirty three cents student accounts. F Y twenty three. A P twenty three forty six, the amount of forty nine thousand, six hundred and thirty five dollars and nineteen cents. And A P twenty four dash one in the amount of twenty seven thousand, three hundred and eighty three dollars and seventy five cents. F Y twenty four. On July sixth, twenty twenty three. And A P twenty three dash forty seven in the amount of thirty three thousand, six hundred and fifty six dollars and fifty seven cents. F Y twenty three. A P twenty four dash two in the amount of thirty three thousand, one thirty two. And fifty one cents. And F Y twenty three, twenty four dash three in the amount of five, five hundred and ninety one thousand, three hundred and eighty four dollars and ninety nine cents. F Y twenty four on July twentieth, twenty twenty three.
I'll second that.
Any suggestion? You did not all available? Notification of the board new hires? Somebody like to read that, please?
Kristen Harmon is transferring from ed tech one to ed tech three at the Stern, at Sterns to help with direct instruction in the absence of special ed classroom teacher. Her hourly rate of pay will be seventeen dollars and forty seven cents.
But a quick question, who's she gonna be working under?
And she'll be in the, um, special room upstairs with Katie and Randy Lee.
So she'll be working in direction of the special age.
Yes, and we still do have advertisements out for, um, special ed teachers for just making a plan B in case our plan A doesn't happen.
Okay, and that was my question, so.
Actually, that with the union today, we had this conversation as well.
Motion for adoption of the policy revision?
Uh, motion to approve the adoption of the revised policy G D A central office clerical staff.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any major changes in that?
And that was to bring, um, the people who are under this contract to have equitable insurance coverage as they, um, rest and. To go through the, um, yeah, so. Everybody else in your negotiating contracts are getting eighty five percent with one, one completely eighty five for the rest of it. It's just to stand alone. I can be specific.
No, 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 I'm fine, I, no, I understand. That's where we come from, thank you.
I have one question, when it comes to the health insurance.
Mm-hmm.
That it says at family plan at the voice dis- uh, discretion. Is that if they have the, so on the last one on the first page.
All right.
Is that they have to be before certain date to be able to get gambling coverage?
Um, to my knowledge, we've that. Um, I guess I'm not sure, it's in the signal we don't have that, but. And have to look at your policy, what's.
That's like if somebody, if somebody moves from reunion and then.
Right.
It's a salary job. They have to admit that, like, I think it just happened when they're calling.
Right, right. So we'll check on, um.
Certainly, because they're waiting period of something.
Well, it's, we did, we have some family coverage, except the people that have a certain.
It's had to be after a certain year, I don't.
So we don't want all of us.
We don't want to miss that as we go through.
Yeah, because we just, him. It's cameraing now and she has meets that, but what if it's somebody different?
Right. We love to make sure that that language covers everybody who may be new or transferring in.
Yeah, I make sure it is in that, it may not have been in that one, that's why I wondered if it was not in that one.
Let me.
Thought we had.
Or.
Yeah, it's good.
So how many are in favor? Of adopting the policy?
I'm all right, it's only that's why we think it is.
Right, and I'm okay with showing, we're just checking if it's. Bring it back.
I will send you all an email that confirms.
That works, sure.
All available. Five one.
Yeah.
Uh. See if the board approve the title changes?
Uh, to see if the board will approve the title change for Julie Maynard to special education administrator.
Second.
Discussion?
So as you know, um, Joanne is currently called it administrative, I'm not administered, assistant specialized director. With calling her now special education administrator, it puts the proper title for her to do, um. Corrective actions, to do accommodations, to do, um, coaching, things like that with the staff. Um, so this title just seems to fit the role better.
So that puts her into administrative contract.
She is, she already was. Literally just the title change.
Okay, so there's no. As far as, as, uh, finances were all set, we've got, yeah, okay, thank you.
And everybody? All of them? Will soon.
Yeah. Who proved Mia Sharet as the food service coordinator with an administrative contract of thirty two thousand dollars? All other benefits are negotiated as, as negotiated.
Second.
Mia was not working on, um, an admin contract. Is not eligible to be a food service director, but, um, the food, giving her the title of food service coordinator. And putting her on the admin contract is a little bit of an increase in pay. Um, but she as well has a tremendous amount of responsibility. Um, she has been with us for the one year. Um, she has a responsibility of, um, coaching her employees. She manages a fair amount of money. She manages reports that are directly connected to money. And it seems fitting that she gets the title that matches the responsibility. I feel last year she had the responsibility and didn't have the time. And by the way, she's done phenomenal, uh, we have not, we have not missed a single, um, monthly claim. We accomplished the review, which is no easy task. Um, she has changed menus so that our, um, students participating in the program is growing. She has gotten at least three grants that are outside of the normal, honestly, she's done a great job.
Isn't.
Quite a bargain.
As far as financially, we've got it in the budget to. You found it in the budget to take care of that.
That's exactly right, we moved a couple of things around, there's a couple of things that are hard to happen. Um, so yes.
Within the food, within the cafeteria program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All of it? By one.
Yeah, right. Um. I don't know how much you all know about the summer school program that goes on, aren't on it granted. But you would not really know that school wasn't happening. I, I mean, a lot of the kids have gone home and they're doing other events, but the children who are pulling up to, um, granted for a summer school are really getting a lot. Um, let me see it. I'm wearing here, that's a newspaper clippings. Yeah, have you guys seen?
I've seen someone for your book, yeah.
I mean, there's just there, the post office, the fire station we had. Um, I don't know where they are at this minute, probably stuck together somewhere. But, um, I was talking with, uh, Danielle and she was saying that, uh, some students didn't know where the post office were. Some students didn't know that we had a airport. Um, so in our, she, it was titled this year, the world around us. And there were twenty five to thirty students on an average. A couple of times the rainy days, there were more students, right, makes sense, right? Um, but she said they really had a wonderful time and really got a lot of, uh, familiarity with our town. And a lot of, of wonderful speakers coming in, Katana Woods and Waters were there. Um, I, I just wanted to make sure you had at least seen the newspaper articles or, or knew what a really fabulous job, um, she was doing. And it's she and others, there's a, a number of other staff that are showing up every day, um, in this hot, sultry days and they're doing a wonderful job. Um, at the same time, for a week, uh, Laura Dwyer had a innovation, an invention camp. And that ran from a nine to three, there were about twenty six kids. Um, she did quite a nice write-up if you haven't seen that. And the, I, that was happened to be here at this school. The kids made all kinds of inventions, they put things together that were models. And then down in the library, they had an inventor's day and people could come in and look at their projects. There were a lot of parents and grandparents, um, two very wonderful things that really were engaging, um, a lot of students in town. Very, very pleased for all of that, it looked great. Um, summer, summer food services, um, Mia is telling me that they're serving between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and sixty kids in our surrounding area. So that's the rec departments out in East Millinock and in here. Um, I walked over to the, um, pool one day and they had like twenty three lunches over there and there were only two remaining. Um, that's a phenomenal service. And the food, some of the food is shelf stable, so it doesn't, the waste is something that's able to be used on another day. We were talking about, um, perhaps trying to get a little refrigerator. We've got a location that, um, sometimes has one or two lunches left over and get like a small refrigerator. So we're talking about trying to get a little grant for that. Um, but you know, that's an entirely different program that she's administering versus our program that we have during the school year. Um, I think it's, I think she's, I think it's wonderful and I'm glad so many children are benefiting from it. Um, just a couple of weeks ago, we got a notification from the D O E that our special education, uh, review is approved. Um, so Joanne and all of the, um, teachers that are involved in the I E Ps, the level coordinators and special ed teachers. Had some things that they had to do to have training and paperwork and all those things documented well. So, um, job went well done to all of you guys. Um, McKenna Vento, uh, K D D has done it, I believe we got a final approval on that, right? There was one thing left that they needed and, uh, Katie has pretty much single-handedly, um, accomplished that. Um, food service, I guess I already mentioned that. Title, I, because we were going through all of these reviews, I was thinking like title's got to fall in here somewhere. So I called the D O E to see when, what the cycle, Millinock it was on for title, because it always used to be a five year cycle. Um, but they've changed the way they do that now and their whole review team for grants gets together. And then they kind of rank in order, the people need various levels of support. So the full blown reviews that they used to do, um, the federal government doesn't see the benefit on them. Like, why should I go into your school, Tom, and do a full review just because five years is up? If your school is all doing well, so they, they've shifted their thoughts to more of a, a coaching and support model. Um, the grants are doing, um, quite well, we've got, um. Joanna Mary and Beth have been working on the, the latest grant to get turned in. And we got the newest financials just a couple of days ago, they find, they send you preliminaries and then they send you finals. So they had done all of their work with the preliminaries, now they've gone to put in the final numbers. So we're, um, doing well there. Today was our second of, um, our three leadership academies. We are working through, um, this book called, um, Finding Your Leadership Style. It's been, uh, it's been fun, I think, for the leadership team. We've looked at what our qualities are, what our traits are and how those work to being a good leader. How you work with individuals, how you communicate, how you build trust, um, all of those things. So we've been working with that and we did our second, um, one today. Our pre audit information is, um, currently being requested from, um. At the audit firm, it's the same audit firm as we had last year. And this is about the time that they started asking for information last year. So this is for the F Y twenty three. Uh, Ron Casey is, um, able to provide the information that they're asking for, um, up to this point. And then as the time goes on, like they get a bunch of information, they start reviewing it. And then they'll ask this course some more things and review that and kind of it's a process going through, so that process that started. I attended a, uh, main school law workshop a couple of Fridays ago. And it is, it really was very interesting on the function of the board. On, I know that I've heard you say that it's a public meeting or it's a meeting for the public, but not a public meeting. That same phrase was used, um, in this workshop. If, if you're ever interested when we're going through some of our committee work, um, Tom and Donnie, and I, Kevin and Donnie. We look at the policies and this book actually tells us like where we are in that process. If they've got something that they've dismissed, something that they've updated. So it's a, a pretty nice, um, kind of like resource sort of work that we do here administering the programs. I met last week with Archititan and they had visitors from Unity College here. And, um, we talked about. How Unity College might have a personality to develop in Millinock it. So they, Unity College has a different way of looking at educating people. And so they're thinking not so much as a satellite, but as how does our thinking about the way we want to present our program? Fit into your community? Do you have space? Do you have interest? Is it, do our, does our thinking about natural resources and environment fit with Millinock it's thinking? And if you know anything about unity, there is kind of a relationship there. This is definitely a tourist town and our natural resources are of great value. Um, the president said a couple of things that I thought, I, I took note on because I thought they were awesome. And I like the model for our high school. Coming to you from Katadon, we use that model up there with some of our kids. Um, and it is, um, earn and learn. So putting some of our students out into a place where they might earn some money. In addition to earning some skills and learn the skills so that we can give them, maybe they're working in a garage. And they're learning to change oil, rotate tires, calibrate things, but then they're able to earn, uh, some credit in school. For doing some math or for some, for some science. So I, that's a real modern thinking about how we're educating kids now. And the other thing that I thought was really interesting is he said, sometimes people confuse tradition and policy for regulation. Sometimes people confuse tradition and policy for regulation. Unity School went from twenty five hundred students prior to COVID. To seventy five hundred now, and they're considering closing their campus and being a school of ten thousand in another year. They just rethought their way that they're presenting material and the way that they're allowing students to earn credits. And the tradition of policy versus regulation goes to, he and his team have gone to the department of ed and talked to their higher ed people. And their program fits the requirements of a higher ed program. So his point was, you don't have to do everything the same way, the way it's always been done in order for it to be legal, effective. And a good idea, so he was, he was pretty interesting that way. Um, moving on, because I know it's hot, um, we've got our second payment for the diploma program, um, twenty thousand, seven, ten. Um, something new in the Chinese government is that they are taking some taxes. Um, so that changed that amount just by a little bit. Um, this year we've got seventy, we had sixty. Um, this year we've got seventy, we had sixty two diploma students. Next year, Tony, our agent is looking at a hundred and five. So um as of right now, we should have a hundred and five signed up for fall. We also have a student, um, we're anticipating a student to be here in our Millinocket school. One from Spain, one from France and one from China joining us in August. Chelsea's doing a really great job and she's got to get a um buddy program, which we're anticipating will. We would offer our student, our Millinocket student, some uh community service time for helping the student acclimate into our community. And do some fun things, maybe have a movie night at your home or share some experiences like that. Um, so she's doing a, a really good job that way. And I'll stop there.
Yeah, thank you very much.
I have more, you know, I do. I know, I'm sorry.
Talked about grants, how are, how are our rest of the grant funds coming? Are we getting anything?
Yep, um, Rhonda was able to um talk with the representative back at the D O E and get us so that we can get caught up on them.
Okay.
Should turn in um three months at a time. So she's gone from, um, she prepared like in the pipeline. It voices five through ten. So over the course of the next um few months, they will be in line and we should have the appropriate. Um reimbursement back in our town.
Thank you.
A couple of parts of the order.
Yeah.
Uh, are we expecting any bills? That will be paid by last year's money? Or is everything in?
Bills from last, you mean like it's all of our twenty three money are already in weeks? If you notice like what we did tonight um for paying some warrants, there's still some later we see once. But they're already budgeted into twenty three, so they're just gonna be paid in appropriately accounted for in the right year. So that's normal.
That, that'll change our bottom line.
It will. I mean, we won't know our bottom line until our final bills are in and that will take, that always takes a little bit of time.
I wish, yeah, can you say, are we showing a surplus? From this year, amen?
Uh, Rhonda, do you, she's shaking her head, so.
Oh, that's good, yes.
Alright.
Any other? Leo. Seeing none. Our upcoming meeting is August first. And September. Well. Yeah, I have a motion to go into executive session, please.
Motion to enter into executive session, instrument to M R S A. Four oh five, six F.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five oh, five oh. Thank you guys. Good seeing everyone.